Township, Porcipony, Troy Hills. Annual Organization Meeting and Township Council, January 7, 2014. Public Invited, Public Participation. Please rise for a flag salute. Mr. Paluso, Mr. Valori, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Paluso?
Here.
Mr. Stanton?
Here.
Mr. Valori?
Here.
Others present: Mayor Barbaireo, Jasmine Lim, Business Administrator, Paul Cazarelli, Assistant Business Administrator, John Ingozino, Esquire Township Attorney, Yancy Uzirmas, Township Clerk, Joseph Kavolcek, CFO. Statement of Compliance?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 18, 2013, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in both the Daily Record on December 20, 2013, and the Star Ledger on December 23, 2013, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 18, 2013. Note: Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 12:00 p.m. on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.porcipony.net.
Upcoming meetings: January 7, 2014, Immediately Followed Organization Meeting, Agenda Meeting, Public Invited, Public Participation. January 14, 2014, 7:30 p.m., Regular Meeting, Public Invited, Public Participation. Okay, now we have appointments. First one up is going to be Council President. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Paul Karifi Jr. as Council President.
I'd like to second that.
Motion by Mr. Paluso to elect Paul Karifi Jr., second by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
All right, let's get Mr. Karifi.
No, he... Oh, yeah. She put you last.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'd like, first of all, wish everybody a Happy New Year, and I'd like to turn everything over to Mr. Karifi. Congratulations.
Thank you. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you to Councilman Stanton for...I know the last couple of years, we've had a lot of big issues come up in town, and I'd just like to thank you for leading the council through that. Thank you. Okay, the next appointment is for Council Vice President. Do I have any nominations?
Yes. I'd like to nominate Councilman Rob Paluso for Vice President.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Sorry, who made the second?
Myself.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Robert.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Okay, next we have Committees and Boards. Board of Education, Council Liaison. Mr. Stanton, will you take that?
Yes, thank you.
Craftsman Farms Foundation. Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Economic Development Advisory Committee. Mr. Paluso?
Yes, I'd be honored.
Okay, Emergency Services Council, I will take. Environmental Advisory Committee, Mr. Paluso?
Yes, I'd be honored as well.
Fire Prevention Bureau, I will take. Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, Mr. Paluso?
Yes, it'd be a privilege. Thank you.
Knoll Country Club Golf Advisory Committee, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to go back to the Environmental Advisory Committee. Do I have any nominations for members for the three-year terms? The Environmental Advisory Committee.
Yes, I would like to nominate Susan Lynn Pearson.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Narav Patel.
I'll second.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
While you have a call to roll. The city members there now, has anyone asked them if they wanted to be...
Yes.
Reappointed?
Yes.
And they said no?
Susan Lynn Pearson is one of the members.
I know, the other two...
There was an opening, yeah, there was an opening for that.
For which?
The under-environmental, one of the...
Well, you had two there. You have Susan Elbin and...
Yeah, she's no longer on it.
She's no longer on it?
Yeah.
That's a vacancy?
Yes.
Okay, what about the other one? Gollum Kibbar?
He's not, he's no longer on it as well. He was replaced.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, any other nominations?
Yes, Council President, I'd like to nominate existing member Melissa Ott Lewis.
Second that.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, we're just going to go back to the Economic Development Advisory Committee. Do I have any nominations for membership, members for that?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Tom Williams.
Second that.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
That was Mr. Valori. Would that be for a three-year term or a two-year term?
A three-year term.
Okay. I'd like to nominate John Beeler.
I'll second that.
For a three-year term?
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Any other nominations for economic development?
Yes, Council President, I'd like to nominate Frank Cahill from the Porcipony Area Chamber of Commerce for a three-year term.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Any other nominations at this time for economic development?
Yes, Council President, I'd like to nominate for another three-year term Anthony Mancuso.
It would be a two-year term. Two-year position next.
Remaining two years.
Two-year term, is that?
It's now, yes.
Okay.
The remainder are two years.
Remaining two years.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Any other nominations for economic development?
Yes, Council President, I have an additional nomination. I'd like to nominate Ganesh Perswad for a two-year term.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Any other nominations? Okay, at this time, we'll table the last position that we have available there. Okay. Okay, we'll go to Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. We have one, a membership, a three-year term. Do I have any nominations?
Yes, I'd like to nominate for a three-year term Mary Perzikky.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, Library, Board of Trustees, Mr. Valori, will you take that?
Yes.
Morris County League of Municipalities, Mr. Valori, will you take that?
Yes, I will.
Municipal Alliance Committee, Mr. Valori, will you take that?
Yes.
Municipal Government Transparency Committee, Mr. Valori, will you take that one?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, under Open Space Committee, we have...okay, yep. Under Municipal Government, we have memberships, one-year term. Do I have any nominations? For Municipal Government Transparency Committee?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Pat Patachuk.
I second that.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, any other nominations? I'd like to nominate Dave Kaplan.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Any other nominations? I'd like to nominate Adriana Afonso.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Any other nominations for Municipal Government Transparency Committee? Okay, we'll table the remaining two positions on that committee for now. Okay, Open Space Committee, we have one member, unexpired term.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Nancy Snyder for that position.
I second that.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, Porcipony Area Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Paluso, will you take that?
Yes, proud to.
Porcipony Child Daycare Center, Mr. Stanton?
Yes, thank you.
Planning Board, Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Police Athletic League, Mr. Stanton?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, Recreation?
Council President, procedurally, the planning board has to be a nomination from the council and voted by the council.
Okay.
That's not an appointment.
Okay. I'd like to nominate Mr. Valori for the planning board position.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, Police Athletic League, Council Liaison, Mr. Stanton?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Recreation Advisory Committee. Any nominations for the Recreation Advisory Committee?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Peter Landigan for that unexpired term.
Okay, I'll second that.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Maybe my thing is out of date. Who is he replacing?
He's already, he was a member on it. He had taken the place of, for David Goss.
Because the only, the only ones I show here on mine is Carmine Catalano.
Yeah, you may, that's probably...
I have an old one?
One or two updates ago, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So, is we in a roll call? I say yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to nominate Robert Bruckin for the three-year term. He's the head of the lacrosse program in town.
I'll second.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, who is this?
Myself.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, Traffic Advisory Committee, I'll take that. Zoning Board of Adjustment. Oh, excuse me, we have one member for the Traffic Committee, a three-year term. Do I have any nominations for that? Okay, no nominations at this time. We'll table that one position. Okay, moving on to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Do I have any nominations for a regular member, four-year term?
Yes, Council President, I'd like to nominate Jonathan Nelson.
I'd like to second that.
And who is that replacing?
I don't have the list in front of me.
Is that Sirwan Putak?
I believe so.
Has he been asked if he wanted to continue? My impression, he did want to continue.
I did not personally speak to him.
Nobody did? Okay.
Okay, roll call.
I'm sorry, was there a second?
Yes, I seconded, yes.
Mr. DePiero?
No.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Resolution 2014-001, Temporary Budget, Motion to Approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Stanton.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, R. 2014-002, Mr. Paluso?
Resolution R. 2014-002, Cash Management Plan.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Paluso, seconded by Mr. Stanton.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Abstained due to relationships with other banks.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R. 2014-003, Mr. Stanton?
Resolution 2014-003, Designation of Official Newspaper.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R. 2014-004, Mr. Valori?
Designation of Newspapers to Receive Notices.
Second.
Motion made by, made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R. 2014-005, Mr. DePiero?
R. 2014-005, Authorizing Township Assessor to Take Certain Actions to Prosecute and Defend Tax Appeals, Motion to Approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Stanton.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R. 2014-006, Mr. Paluso?
Granting Fee Exemptions in Connection with Permits for Construction, Zoning, Engineering, Fire Prevention, Health, Parks and Forestry, and Recreation Departments, Motion to Approve.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, seconded by Mr. Valori.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R. 2014-007, Mr. Stanton?
Resolution 2014-007, Authorizing Payment Full Salary to All Township Employees Having Called to Active Duty, Motion to Approve.
I'd like to second that.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R. 2013-008, Mr. Valori?
Designating Employee to Serve as Public Agency Compliance Officer, Motion to Approve the Above Resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R. 2014-009, Mr. DePiero?
R. 2014-009, Authorizing Township Tax Collector to Charge of Penalty on Delinquent Taxes, Assessments, or Other Municipal Leans or Charges, Motion to Approve the Above Resolution.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Valori.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R. 2014-010, Mr. Stanton?
Resolution 2014-010, Authorizing Township Tax Collector to Charge Interest on Delinquent Taxes, Assessments, or Other Municipal Leans or Charges, Motion to Approve.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Council President, before you read R. 20011, may I make three points, please?
Okay.
In regards to the Township Attorney, I just wanted to make three points tonight, if I may. The firm has secured successful outcomes in following litigation on its Baldwin Manor versus Porcipony, saving the township approximately $3 million in liability. The firm litigated the case, the conclusion obtained summary judgment at trials in the court. What this basically did was it saved the town, saved township workers their jobs, because if we would have lost that case, first, we'd have $3 million in liability, and second, we would have to lay off all the sanitation, because we would not have been able to handle it. So I just wanted to give you some of the successful things that the Township Attorney has done. Forge Pond versus Porcipony. In this trio of litigation, the firm effectively managed complex land use, development, water, sewer, and municipal services while aggressively negotiating comprehensive settlement package with the plaintiff. That was another successful case.
Excuse me, Mayor, can you repeat that again, the second? You just, you kind of sped up on that one there.
The second was Forge Pond versus Porcipony in a trio of litigation. The firm effectively managed complex land use, development, water, sewer, and municipal services while aggressively negotiating comprehensive settlement package with the plaintiff. In the first three years of service, the firm saved the taxpayers of Porcipony over And now, going into 2013, a large portion of township litigation is involved in one matter. So I notified the Conflict Counsel, our attorney, Michael Lavery, in regards to Councilman, Council President Paul Karifi, and Councilman Louis Valori, if they have conflicts on voting on issues pertaining to our Township Attorney. And I have a letter here from the Conflict Attorney stating such that there are conflicts. I will hand this over to the Township Clerk in regards to the conflicts that you have in voting for or against whatever the Township Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, this is news to me. Can you read that to the public then? Because you're bringing this information forward now.
It says Councilman Paul Karifi Jr. and Councilman Louis Valori. I worked, I called them up last week. I got the information today. And the fir-, you know, I'm going to give this to them. I'm not going to read it into the record. I'm going to actually give it to the clerk.
So might I get the opportunity to read this?
Yes, sure, I can have the opportunity to read it.
Before he votes?
Well, that's up to them. The conclu-, I agree with the conclusion. Councilman Karifi and Councilman Valori have significant conflicts of interest with the regard of attorney Inglisino and therefore should not participate in matters involving attorney Inglisino, including any vote related to his potential reappointment as township council. Based upon the events of the past year, the process would be tainted and only bring harm to the reputation of the township as well as Councilman Karifi and Councilman Valori individually. I will hand this over to Yancy, and you can make copies.
As Council President, hearing that there's a conflict letter and indicating that the councilmen have not had a chance to read this, I'd like to make a motion to table R 2014-0011.
I'd like to second that. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yeah, since they have not had a chance to review it, I guess I would have to go along with that and second the table.
I just wanted to cut in-
This will be tabled until our next meeting next week?
Regular meeting.
Our regular meeting?
Regular meeting on the 14th, yes. I just wanted to cut in and just make a statement. Should Mr. Valori be seconded, or should?
You're only bringing information to me now, so you're telling me something I'm not-
Well, let me, I have one more concern, though. Let me just bring up before we vote on this. Is our township attorney representing the township in any matter in court in the next week? That would be affected by this?
No, well, the answer is yes, we are representing you. But the answer is, is that irrespective of the council vote, I would be a holdover anyway. So this does not affect any representation concerning the township.
Okay.
Okay, the question I had, Mr. Valori's second, is that a conflict by him seconding this matter? If so, should he pull it back and have someone else second?
Well, there's an opinion of conflicts, counsel, which either the counsel can respect or not. So I leave it to you as to what you want to do.
As a courtesy, I'm just voting to table so that they have a chance, an opportunity to read it, which they have not had an opportunity to do.
I'm still going to second the motion, table it. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Okay. Just to advise the public, before we have our public hearing for this portion of the meeting, this part of our meeting, there will be another public hearing during our regular agenda meeting. Just to let everybody know. Okay, do I have a motion to open up the public hearing?
Did you want to, before they leave, introduce the Diggent Terrors that were here?
Okay. Did they leave? They already left. I'd just like to, oh, okay. Just like to introduce and thank freeholder John Cicero, former councilman, and former councilman Anne Gracia, who is now our county clerk.
Happy New Year, guys.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to open up the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Paluso. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Okay, if anyone would like to speak, you'll be given five minutes. Just come up at this time, sign in. State your name and address.
Good evening. Adam McGovern, 87 St. John's Avenue in Mount Tabor. Just wanted to welcome everyone back and in two of your cases, welcome you for the first time. And I just wanted to thank those who were here, those long ago days of two weeks ago in 2013, for the resolution that you had passed asking for a withdrawal or amendment of the bill introduced by state senators Pinocchio and Buco regarding Greystone. I think that this was a brave move, as it turned out, because the freeholders voted unanimously in the other direction. But I think that this had been a good move to, you know, keep the dialogue open in a way that was overdue. We, a number of us went to the freeholders' meeting, and there was no such dialogue. So I thank you for, you know, the back and forth that we had at that time. And though I must say that everyone who did come out on that very cold day before Christmas Eve to the freeholders' meeting spoke, you know, against the resolution that the freeholders were considering and, you know, for a slower approach that might, you know, keep open the options for preserving the Kirkbry Building at Greystone. Since then, Star Ledger has had an article, which you probably all saw, where the, you know, county officials were pretty specifically put on record saying that they have no interest in that building, which I think, you know, bolsters the claims of us who think that the bill kind of effectively removes options, you know, for saving that and doing something of value, you know, with this very priceless landmark. And I understand the Wall Street Journal is going to be covering this later this week on Friday. So, you know, the dialogue will be continuing. And I thank you for your part in that and hope that, you know, the process will allow you to continue to be a part of it. Thanks.
Thank you.
If I may speak, Council President? Adam, I want to thank you for all of your efforts on behalf of the township in trying to preserve Greystone.
Thank you.
I did have an opportunity to speak to Senator Buco over the holidays and explain to him why we passed our resolution and why we are concerned that if there is no option for any commercial enterprise to be present, then no commercial body would be interested in investing in there if there's nothing in it for them. No company's going to do this out of the goodness of their heart. There has to be some commercial advantage for them. I explained this to him. He understood that, or at least he claimed he understood that, but he said he is optimistic that he will be able to obtain state money to preserve the main building, not the wings that are falling, have no roofs anymore, none of those. But a major portion of just that main, the main structure with state money. So that's why he pushed to introduce that bill.
That is, may I respond to this?
Absolutely.
That is a new wrinkle, since I know that he has posited that as a compromise, and it did come out in the Star Ledger article. I, you know, I mean, I think that the bid that went out, well, not the bid, but, you know, the call that went out for expressions of interest from the state did cover the entire building. And, you know, as you've seen, there were some ambitious and, you know, in the view of these, you know, reputable developers, realistic ideas, not easy, but realistic ideas for, you know, preserving most or all of the building. So I really think that this just went out there. I really think that that's, we should be working through.
There's something wrong with the mic, Lee. It's not working.
No, you need to speak up so it, because it gets recorded. Grab. You answer, you have another one? Just lean over to one of these, Adam. Because it has to go on the record.
Okay. Is that, okay. Pardon my posture. The, I think that there should be, you know, a more meaningful and complete dialogue about the rest of the building, you know, before that happens. I mean, yes, the roof is in disrepair, but, you know, I've had a number of engineers from all ends of the spectrum to, you know, knock it down today to save it at all cost, tell me that they think that that building could actually withstand an A-bomb with a straight face. So, you know, I think that more of that should, we would like to see more of that, you know, examined. But it is interesting that he says he's confident, that the senator says he's confident of getting state funding. That did not, you know, appear in the press. And I'm not sure that the state has expressed any interest in that.
After I introduced to him that, you know, if the state is willing to spend $10 million to tear the structure down, why can't they give that to, towards reconstruction or towards some developer who would want to reconstruct it? They're going to have to spend the money anyway. I had the impression, he didn't say it, but I had the impression that that's the money he wants to go after and restore just that main section. But that would have to be worked out with the freeholders because they're taking on that responsibility of what happens to that property when they buy it for a dollar.
Right, yeah, yeah. And I think there's maybe some missing steps there in terms of the state, you know, kind of coming back to the people who have proposed ideas for the whole building, which has, of course, the most historical integrity. Also, I mean, in terms of money, if they wanted to benefit from the federal historic tax credit, that would be about, you know, keeping the wings, not, you know, I mean, I'm not sure that they could get any funding from that. I think, you know, federal funding is a very real prospect if they don't just go straight to, you know, only saving, you know, this one little proportionally little portion of the building.
I'll keep up your efforts. I for one appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Take care.
Thank you very much.
Adam, I just also want to say a comment. I mimic what Mike DePiero was saying in a lot of ways. You know, I believe in preserving our heritage and our community. I know you've worked very hard on this project. And, you know, one thing I commend you on, as well as all the volunteers on Porcipony Troy Hills, is their perseverance and their hard work and dedication towards the projects to serve our community. So, you know, in working with you, you know, I look forward to it in the future. But, you know, we must preserve our culture and our heritage of our fine community. And I believe you've done a great job. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Papatacha 182 Hawkins Avenue. I just got two questions tonight. One is that I noticed that there is a police officer standing in here tonight. I just want to know if this is going to be typical at all meetings? Are we now going to have police in attendance? I just find it offensive to the taxpayers who show up at these meetings, but we could have better use on the roads. Just my opinion. I don't know what the plan is or what's been happening, but they've been out.
Just to give you a quick answer, Adam, I do not know. I don't know who requested to have the officer here tonight, so.
Okay, thank you. Secondly, my concern, my concern is a very big concern, and I think this is a conflict. I think I know the answer to this, but I would like to know who is representing the township of Porcipony against our D.R. Realty.
My firm is representing the township.
Okay. If I had to take a vote of confidence myself, I would not come up with a confident vote. My opinion has been attending all the Waterview meetings, just attending all meetings in general, but the Waterview meetings, the way they were pushed from the mayor and the attorney, their adamant pushing of it, to me, is a conflict of their interest. And I don't, I think we may should consider going to an outside counsel. I know it will cost us more, but I'd rather know somebody is defending us because they're defending us. I just can't see him defending us after what we saw up on the dais all that time. So kind of consider that, please. I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, see no one else coming forward? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second. I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Okay, just to let the public know, we will be taking a five-minute break before we start our regular agenda meeting. Thank you.
All right, we're recording.
Township Council Porcipony Troy Hills, Township Council Agenda Meeting, January 7, 2014. Public invited, public participation. Meeting called to order by myself at?
8:21.
8:21 PM. Flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Here.
Mr. Paluso?
Present.
Mr. Stanton?
Here.
Mr. Valori?
Here. Others present, Mayor? No, okay, no, Mayor's not here. Jasmine Lynn, Business Administrator. Paul Cazarelli, Assistant Business Administrator. John Inglisino, Esquire, Township Attorney. Yancy Wazimis, Township Clerk. Joseph Kovalchik, CFO. Purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for the regular Township Council meeting of January 14, 2014. Formal action may or may not be taken.
Statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board of the municipal building on December 18, 2013, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in both the Daily Record, December 20, 2013, and the Star Ledger on December 23, 2013, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 18, 2013. Note, council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision, public access Channel 21 at 12:00 PM on Sundays, and are also available for viewing at www.porcipony.net.
Okay, ordinances, second readings, public hearings, none? Status of adopted ordinances. Ordinance 2013:31, adopted 12/17/13. Mayoral action 12/20/13. Effective date 12/28/13. 2013:32, 2013:33, 2013:34, 2013:35, 2013:36, and 2013:37. Were all adopted on 12/17, 2013. Mayoral action 12/20/13. Effective date, January 9, 2014. Discussions, reminders. I have a couple things. Does anybody have anything? At last week's, or at the, our last meeting, the special meeting, it was brought up about the contract for the insurance broker, and that that was going to be discussed or brought up for our meeting. Do we have anything from the administration on that? Has that contract expired, December 31st?
We were going to bring that in at the February meeting.
February meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, also, I'd like to request that a ordinance be drawn up for our next meeting to change municipal ordinance, giving back the power and the authority to approve all vouchers and payments to the Township Council. I'd like to second that motion. You have to second it?
Okay.
Can I just bring up one point on this?
Sure.
The only thing I would request is there to be a few exceptions because I'm going to need to pay debt service, which may occur before a council meeting.
Okay.
Payroll and some of those items. If I could provide you guys just the list for normal items that most municipalities and counties allow for payment?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question. How much does that come out to about? You have an idea?
Debt service, this year, about $7, $7 million.
Are you going to give us a breakdown on that?
Yes.
Okay.
When you look at the municipal budget this year, you'll see it all. But that's the only thing is, there'll be debt service payments on 2/1, 2/14. And if we don't have a council meeting, then I won't be able to pay them on time.
Right, okay. Sure, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Anything else? Okay, scheduled meetings, January 14, 2014, at 7:30 PM. Regular meeting, public invited, public participation. February 4, 2014, at 7:30 PM. Agenda meeting, public invited, public participation. Minutes for approval, none? Mayor, none? Administration? Okay, bids?
We're recommending a ward of the, I'm sorry, recommending a ward of the wheel loader. And the fog bid was postponed, so we're taking those bids later this month.
Okay, so that the, the first one is still there? The second one, the fog one, that's being taken off for now?
The bids, the bid was delayed for three weeks because of the snowstorm.
Jasmine?
Yes.
A question on that. Can you tell me if that's a replacement wheel loader or is that an addition to the equipment?
I don't know. I can get that answer for you before next week.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Additionally, does that come with a warranty as well on?
There's a one-year warranty.
One year on transit engine on that, on Hyundai?
Yes.
And Jasmine, what's the cost of that going to be about?
It's a hundred and...
One-twenty-one and change?
One-twenty-one.
Okay, and how old is the vehicle that it's replacing?
I, I'm not sure, I, that's what I'm going to find out.
Okay, and secondly, can that vehicle be shared with another department? So we're not replicating buying another vehicle that's similar?
We, we do share vehicles throughout the township.
Okay, can you just tell us who they're going to be sharing it with, so we're not just purchasing vehicles?
It's, it's just, it's based on, on, you know, as, as they need it, if, you know, I mean, that's, that's one of the things we do with, particularly with the chipper, that was a five-hundred-thousand-dollar piece of equipment that's...
Where do they have everything staged at? Where's the vehicle at?
This, because this was for Parks and Forestry, that's where it would be located.
Okay. Still get us that information for us?
Yes, they will.
Great.
The warranty is for... It says five-thousand-hour powertrain. I don't know if that means anything to you.
Yes, no, I understand it, thank you very much.
Anything else, Jasmine?
Do you want me to go through the rest of the ordinances, or just the bids right now?
No, just the bids right now.
Okay.
Okay, quotations, proposals, qualifications, received, none, requested, none. Okay, ordinances, any questions or concerns?
Just, just to note, the second ordinance that's shown, we want to pull that for now.
Okay.
That's related to parking on Twin Oaks near the high school. We did receive some resident complaints about it, but we're concerned that if we make it no parking, that the cars will just shift down to another street, so we're trying to figure out some solution to that issue.
So we'll have that pulled?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no other questions or concerns, okay. Resolutions, questions or concerns?
Yes, I have questions or concerns in regards to the judges' appointments. I'd like to have both judges' positions removed from the consent agenda.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or concerns?
Council President?
Yes.
The, the last resolution on page five, or it's the, it's the top of page five.
Top, okay.
We'd like to pull that.
Okay.
I have one of the...
Well, go on. Why are we pulling it?
We're thinking of actually issuing an RFQ for, for that.
Yeah, in regards to the last item there, the resolution for D and H, both are risk solutions? That fee of thirty-six thousand?
It's pulled.
Okay, all right. I was just going to say, you want to give me more detail about that, or just, was there concerns about it while you're pulling it?
No, we're, we're thinking of issuing an RFQ.
Okay.
We, we were originally going to put it on as a non-fair and open, which we've done every year for the past, I want to say easily ten years, but, no, well, since pay-to-play came into
Okay.
Play.
Okay. Township Office Reports, resolutions, none. Engineering Report. Mr. Stanton?
Status of road resurfacing, put-in stone area. Developer installed a water main, sanitary sewer line, portion put a stone road. Township accepted ownership of sanitary main at November twelfth, 2013 council meeting. Installation of sanitary laterals is under construction. No council action is required at this time. Next two items, there is no change. No parking in Twin Oaks, Twin Oaks Court and Pinecrest Lane.
Are we pulling this?
That's, that's the one we pulled.
Okay, that's being pulled. Acceptance drain adjustment, portion of block seven-seventy, lot one, twenty-five Route forty-six East, new road. Coordinates with a preliminary site plan approval granted by the Board of Adjustments to Danny Realty LLC. Applicant desires to grant easement rights to the township for a stormwater drain pipe, which runs through their property. Office has reviewed the meters and bounds, description of easement, we have no objection. Ordinance must be adopted for acceptance of the easement.
Okay, we'll adopt those. Okay, everybody in favor of adopting those?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll put them on for introduction next week.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Chief Financial Officer. Resolution appropriation reserve transfer? Mr. Kavalcik, I'd said a couple of questions myself, anybody else have questions?
Yes.
Yeah, I have several questions.
Yes. Mr. Paluso, go ahead.
Joe, if you can please explain to me why the transfers are necessary?
What I usually do is towards the end of the year, the best way I could describe it is Murphy's always knocking on our door. We can't really predict how much snow we're getting, some of these other items, so you budget conservatively. So towards the end of the year, the way the transfer periods work, you're allowed to do it the last two months of the fiscal year, or the first three months of the preceding fiscal year. So what I'll do is I'll start taking a look towards the end of the year, along with the beginning of the year, of what line items do I think are very tight? And what I kind of do is, I'll move some funds along those lines in order to provide myself a little bit of a cushion, and that's a bad word to use, but I'm going to use that anyway. I don't know if there's purchase orders that have been put out there that haven't been entered in the system. And the last thing I want to do is find out, I'm short fifty-three dollars in the line. So what I'll do is I'll take a look and make sure I have about a thousand dollars in the line to feel a little bit of comfort.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So, based on what you said there, for instance, under legal, other expenses, fifty-five thousand dollars, does that mean that we're, we're going over?
No, I haven't seen all the bills yet. But I know from last year alone, even prior to me starting, I know there's been water view bills, limo licensing for these other elections that came upon. We had a number of OPA request, a number of varying questions. I actually had them prepare that FEMA ordinance for us. So there's been a lot of different items that, since I wasn't involved with the preparation of the thirteen budget, I'd rather make sure that I'm comfortable, to make sure that I have enough of funds to make sure they go through. I mean, the average month's bills are about forty thousand. I left a little bit, just in case there's something that I wasn't prepared for.
All right, excuse me, that was forty thousand dollars a month in legal bills?
It, it varies, month to month. I'm taking the worst case.
Okay, so the question I have for you is fifty-five thousand, what does it pertain to in legal bills?
Right now?
What are the hot items that we're paying fifty-five thousand for?
That's not the amount that I'm saying we're going to pay. Forty thousand, various items that they represent the township on.
Such as what?
I don't have a bill in front of me, but varying water view, some of those different items, so.
Okay, two items?
There, there are also, there are also consulting and outside consulting reports and so forth in connection with various litigations that are put through the legal column as well. Those are not all legal fees.
Okay, so it's going to average about fifty-five thousand dollars, actually you need to cover that?
No, as I stated, I'm figuring, what I try to do is leave some money in the line item in case there's other items that I don't know about coming in.
So you're looking for a float?
Yes.
Of how much?
Probably between ten and fifteen.
Of fifteen?
Is what I did. Just in case there's something out there that I don't know of, I start in September, so there could be something sitting out there from another attorney that we use, that I don't know about. So the last thing I want to do is come back to you guys, again in February or March, saying I need these additional funds. That's just kind of how I always operated. I'm very conservative in my approach. If I think it's forty, and if I have the funds available elsewhere, I'm going to put in a higher amount to make sure that I'm not coming back to you guys.
All right, so worst-case scenario, if we are short, then what are the repercussions from it? So they get paid a month later?
Well, it depends. If I find out in April...
What's happened in the past?
I don't, I haven't been here that long, councilman, so. I could tell you, I worked at the county for thirteen years, so I could tell you there, what we did is we made sure that never happened. If, for some reason, there are bills that exceed this item, there's a couple of things that can happen. You would have to declare an emergency, which to me is poor planning, if it's something on a bill nature, if it's something I can cover through a transfer. Or two, something that's even worse, is there's a law, a local budget law, that I have to oversee. One of the things when I take the oath for my license, there is actually a specific statutory reference, four-dash-fifty-seven, that talks about knowingly over-expending a budget. It's a type four misdemeanor crime, and I would have to go to jail for doing it. Not just that, I also have to lose my pension. So, not for anything, but with all due respect, I really don't want to lose my pension.
So you're comfortable with fifty-five thousand dollars for legal expenses to cover for the month?
To cover through the last part of the year, yes.
And to clarify, that includes a float of about ten to fifteen thousand dollars?
I'm figuring it's probably going to be, I'm hoping, closer to fifteen. But, as I said, in case there's something out there from Labor Council, other items that I haven't talked to or found out about, I want to make sure.
All right, so another question is, so when they prepare their budget, they underestimate what they're going to spend then?
No.
No?
Well, when you have a number of items that go out there with litigation of these types, where you have something like a water view, some of the items that have popped up, the share amount, and I could tell you from coming through my department alone, the amount of OPA requests we're getting, usually, most of those go through legal.
Okay, and so how much are we paying legal for an OPA request? How much are we paying per hour?
Well, it would be dependent upon the nature of the OPA request, so.
You, you tell me, what are we paying, you're the ones cutting the checks? What's, what's the average, so?
About three-fifty an hour, three-hundred-and-fifty.
All right, so...
Oh, sorry, one-fifty.
All right, so, common citizen comes in here, does an OPA request. So the town's getting billed a hundred-and-fifty dollars an hour to do an OPA request?
Depends what the OPA request is, councilman.
Okay, so they're getting billed, though?
If it's, well, I consider a plain vanilla one, and I feel comfortable handling from my side. I have no issues with it. But there are some where they're coming in and asking for a very large amount of information. On those, I want to make sure I'm protecting the township's best interest also, and I'm not putting out information that can get us.
Okay, so basically, an OPA request is?
Yeah, about a hundred-and-fifty.
Dollars an hour, okay.
So, Joe, you're saying that the budget was not underestimated? Because if I take out the fifty-five thousand, we have about ninety-four thousand dollars almost left that you're requesting. Is there a float in each one of these numbers that we're looking at? Or is one of these things in particular over time or something?
On, when you're saying on these other lines?
Yeah.
I'm just doing it as a...
Let's start from the top, admin, two thousand?
Well... Right, the, the public works is the biggest one, and I'm doing that as of making sure that there wasn't another snow as far, as far as assault delivery. So I'd rather put some money in there. Ambulance, I'm just estimating with the, the end of the year, the last payroll bumped up about a couple thousand dollars.
Was, was salt purchased, do we have ample salt for the last couple of storms?
As of December twenty-fourth, yes.
Okay.
Fire prevention, same thing. Planning board, due to the water view, courts. That's prosecutor bill, that came through. I think it's about a hundred-and-fifty dollars short, once again, I want to make sure. If you're asking about telephone, same thing. I think there's about six to seven thousand dollars worth of bills that are out there.
If I can interject in reference to telephone, I remember prior to being a councilman, there was a potential problem with phone bills, in which there was fraud involved. Was there any losses pertaining to that, or this number is purely an overage in telephone usage?
The, the, that four-hundred-thousand-dollar bill?
No, we actually negotiated that.
Yeah.
We saved it, yeah, we saved the township that, that money.
Okay, so it's ten thousand is an overage on the telephone expense?
It's basically more along due to the cell phone billing. We switched from Nextel to Verizon, which is a little more expensive. So once again, I'm leaving a little bit of an item in that line, just to make sure that cell phone usage didn't come in high for December, and now I'm at a loss.
Did we add number of cell phones to our plan, or did we remove cell phones?
That I'm not sure of.
I don't think we added any phones to the plan, but the, I, I think we're all in agreement that the Verizon coverage is much better. We're not experiencing the drop calls that we had been experiencing previously, within town especially. So it's, it's, it was well worth the switch.
Okay. How many cell phones currently are out there with the employees of our township?
I, I can get that number for you, but it's, it's probably over a hundred.
If you can please give that information, I appreciate it. Thank you, Jasmine.
I have another. You have another question? Council Paluso, you done, or?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, real quickly, this hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars, are you using from gasoline? Correct?
Correct.
So basically, when you did your budget, you had a buffer there, so you didn't use that as a surplus? For this hundred-and-forty-nine thousand?
We, we cast that, that budget in, say, March. And, and in March, you really don't have a sense of where gasoline particular. There have been years when gasoline escalated so high. And we, we always estimate gasoline high, because we were short. I, I don't know, Mike, if you remember how, but that one year, we were shorted by a lot.
So let me ask a question, last year, did you have the same surplus in gasoline of a hundred-and-fifty thousand?
In, in twenty-twelve?
Yeah, when you did the budget. So you, you're, you're taking this money from gasoline, all right?
Yes.
Okay, so you had a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, that's basically a surplus?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So last year, did you run into the same predicament that you had a surplus in gasoline? Because what I'm trying to get at is, are you asking for a budget that you really don't need that amount of money, and then you're just using it out, utilizing that money for something else? That's what I'm getting at.
Well, that, that's not the purpose of asking for that amount of money. We, we ask for the amount of money to, and there's, there's definitely a buffer in there.
Obviously, it sounds like, yeah.
In case, the gasoline budget is close to a million dollars.
Okay.
And so, in the event, the ga, I mean, gasoline prices have been so volatile that we never want to be caught in the same position that, that we were caught in that one year. So we, I, there's no doubt that, that we try to, to buffer, and we use very conservative estimates.
Okay, so what was your buffer last year? Did you have the same amount, a hundred-and-fifty thousand?
I, you know what, we would have to go back to the budget, it's in the...
Yeah, it's important to me, I, I need to know that.
It's in last year's explanatory, on what we were estimating the, the average cost of gasoline to be.
Okay.
Can we get a copy of last year's budget to our new council?
Absolutely.
That will answer a lot of the questions.
Oh, well, we can, and it's, it's also up on the website, but we, we can.
I'm asking for you now, okay, that's great, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Anything from the attorney?
Yes, Mr. Council President, quickly. Good news to report. The state approved the township's affordable housing spending plan on December twenty-seventh. That's significant, because we've been trying to spend money in the township's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, particularly six-hundred-thousand dollars, which was, the council had authorized to be given to Community Hope, a local nonprofit, for a project. And because the Affordable Housing Plan, the spending plan, had not been approved by the state, my advice was to hold off on making that donation until the approval, you know, was forthcoming, because I was concerned that the state may come back and, you know, say that you spent the money out of your trust fund without proper authorization, and then require the taxpayers to refund that amount. But we have been able to expedite the approval of the spending plan, and so now that is done, and the money can now be spent.
Okay, thank you. Township Offices, Committees, none. Communications, Correspondents, none. Applications, two thousand fourteen, license renewals, Part Three. Questions on that?
No.
All right, at this time, entertain a motion to open up the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
My second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Paluso, roll call.
Mr., excuse me, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. If anybody would like to step forward, please state your name, your address, sign in, you'll be given five minutes.
Turn the mic on.
Right in the front there, there's a, right there.
I didn't want to waste the battery.
Hello?
Yeah, you go, Roy.
You go.
Roy, yeah. Roy Massmer, Ten Drummond Drive. I want to start off with something, this past weekend, I was at a retail store, and I happened to be going down an aisle, and I heard this woman talking to this other woman. This is not a joke story, this is what sure happened. And she was talking about how she got a knock on her door, and she got a summons and everything else, because she didn't have dog licenses. So I overheard this, and I stopped her, I said, ma'am, I just heard what you were talking about, I said, can you tell me what town you live in? She said, Precipity. So I said, oh, thank you. So I walked away, and I went like this, great job by our animal control department. So we, and that staff, I don't know if you're aware of this, council members, but that staff has been reduced over the last couple of years, but yet they had the time to go out and to do something that's right. Because of safety, if a dog doesn't have rabies shots, et cetera. So I'm thinking about that. I'm saying, our housing department, which hasn't been cut, it's been increased over since Mayor Luther, but yet we can't do a job on over occupancy in this town. So I just want that, I hope, I don't know if you take notes, but if you could pass that on to Chris, that was very good what his department did there. That's a very good department, by the way. Next thing, I know, Council President, I probably should have brought this up during the other part of the meeting, during the reorg, but the only three people in this room probably knows what I'm going to bring up. That would be Councilman DePiero, Papitaccio, and myself. What irks me, and I have no problem with us paying reservists who are on active duty, but I do have a problem that we don't take care of the other people in this town. And as retired, full current... And as retired full colonel Lou Valori, I'm sure he served with many reservists, who have had to sacrifice financially, because they've been called to active duty, I'd like to see this town get some good press. We have the money here, because we found the money for these unbelievable raises, and everything else that's gone on in this town, to help the men and women who are serving this country, who are reservists, who have been called back two, three, four times, and they're working in private industry, and their companies can't afford to pay them. We've got the money, and maybe, maybe it'd be a little bit symbolic, but maybe $1,000, $2,000 worth of their real estate taxes. I'd really like to have this council consider that. I don't know how many reservists we have in this town, or how many times they've been called to active duty, and probably a lot of them won't even step forward, because they don't feel, they don't wanna be putting their hands out. Next thing. Real quick, on the engineering report, I saw that Glacier Hills sidewalks are off now? I mean, I know that Council President Paul Karifi came out and looked at them, it's a disgusting situation. Next thing, regarding Fairview, I thought that was gonna be discussed tonight. You know, I have no words to say this, but I thought he was a wise guy last week, two weeks ago, you know, when Councilman at the time, Mr. Karifi asked him, you know, "What's your fee?", and he goes $38.50. That comes out to about $240,000, and in this economy, and I don't care what business you're in, your customers are asking you, you know, "Hey, can you do better?", whatever, well, I think he should do better for the people of Precipiny. Plus, he's also involved in Garden State Jif, I don't know if he's involved in the dental plan, or whatever. And regarding to this self-insured medical insurance plan, I'd like to see a medical insurance trust set up, where each month, when our controller, CFO, writes the check to, what's it called, IDD or IDA?
IDA.
IDA, thank you, and, and we have this claim loss, I'd like to see a monthly P and L. Because if these claim losses have been as good as they've been disclosed to us last week, for the last three years, 61, 65, 82, we should be sitting with a hell of a lot of money. I'd like to know where that money went. Also, I'd like to, and this whole P and L, what we're paying for the excess insurance. That's it. And thank you again, Jasmine, for that ball, she got me a ball signed by Louis Tiant, when she was up at Fenway Park for a private tour, thank you.
Who's that? Thank you.
I was gonna wait till next week.
State your name and address.
Nick Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. I'd like to know if this council would seriously consider looking at the regional master plan, we're part of the Highlands, we're in the planning zone, if we conform our master plan, which in reality is a joke to these developers, we're being sued right now by RD. If we had, we started a conformance procedure in 2008, it died in 2010. If by some chance it had been completed, maybe the developer could've, or maybe couldn't've, done something with Waterview, but we would've had all the answers we needed, and we would've had the experts, not people representing their own opinions, but we would've had scientific grounding, and we would've had the state of New Jersey to back us up. So if RD wanted to get cute and sue Precipiny, well, guess what, pal, now you have to sue the state of New Jersey. And that's what we should do, because when you look at the history of our master plan, we're not even being true to our own goals and objectives. And it doesn't have any validity, because it can be crushed by a developer with a lot of money. So if we really, really do have a master plan, and we really do care about the community, we should link up with the master plan, be real Americans. Precipiny is part of New Jersey, part of the Highlands, we're all represented geographical zone, and we should give up our master plan for the conformance of the Highlands, a regional master plan, and I think this council should seriously consider it, at least bring it to the forefront, have a public debate about it, public comments, and see where it takes us. There's not much left anyway, but there's enough that we should still, we owe it to ourselves and to our future. So I ask you to please consider continuation of the New Jersey Highlands Master Plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, see no one step forward, like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Paluso. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?